Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order, the regular Board of Trustees meeting for December 9, 2025. Will you please stand and bring me in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Karsbeck.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy.
Here.
Trustee Hardy.
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht.
Here.
Trustee Wing.
Here.
Trustee Ayers.
Here.
Trustee Brody will be absent this evening.
Thank you, Clerk. Next on our agenda is citizen participation. This is a chance for the audience to speak to anything that is not on tonight's agenda. We have a couple signed up. Cut out with Brian Locke.
Brian Locke, 706 Seventh Street, Birthed in Colorado. Just a friendly reminder, you guys, for us nerd geeks at home that are watching the meetings, most of you are really hard to hear. Carl, Tim, and some of you others, you gotta grab that mic and just talk into it. But any, because we, some of us do watch. But anyways, Brett Wing, trustee Brett, I did notice at the last meeting you were discussing the lack of completed trails at Heron Lakes and the little park out there. And you have a sympathetic ear right here about that. If you ever want to meet up and walk those trails or anything that, if you need some citizens to get in there behind you, love to, my buddy Rick is not here right now. He was not able to attend. He's kind of the unofficial authority on the bit of a mess of trails and maps and how they don't correlate. But so, I just came to say, if you ever looking for a hand to figure out anything there, let us know. But it looks like, and I might be breaking the rule a little here now, but nothing will happen next year because there's no money in the budget for that. But anyways, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't think we, I don't think we have anything for Heron Lakes particularly, right? Okay, Rosie Yvonne.
Hi, I'm here to remind you all that a response to an email is not thank you for your email.
Rosie, would you mind getting your address?
Sure. My name is Rosie. I live at 1035 Seventh Street. I sent you an email over Thanksgiving about community engagement improvement ideas, and all I received was a thanks for your email, essentially. And I don't consider that a response. I would like to also remind you that my primary request is that you pause making decisions until February 1st, until you've had two full Monday board meetings with questions or comments and a response after the three minutes, and have them open to the public. And I'm happy to come and babysit people's children so they can attend. But I really think you need to work on your community engagement piece. Unfortunately, you're proving a lot of people correct, and my experience has been similar at this point, with the exception of May, because she communicates amazingly with almost everybody. So I just want to remind you that that's not a response. A response is, hey, like, this is how you can make this happen, or hey, these are ways that you can get involved. I don't know a lot about government, but we are told a million times to email you all, and if the response is just thanks for your email, that's not gonna work. So please consider having two full board meetings where you just listen to people come with their concerns about any project before you move forward and make further decisions about our community. Thank you.
Did you bring up in your email the thing with coffee with the mayor? Was that your email where you thought that would be a good exercise for the rest of us?
Yes, correct. That is the email that I had all those ideas.
Good recommendation.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chris Gage. I live at 617 Sixth Street here in Birthed. It hadn't occurred to me to sign up. It was just sort of a spur of the moment thing. But I drive not infrequently on Route 56 after dark, and the lines on the road aren't bright enough. You know, they don't reflect. I don't know whether that road is the responsibility of the town or the county or the state, but I think, well, I'm suggesting that someone who is in charge of the road redo the lines on the road. It's really hazardous as it is right now. 56 going from town over to Route 25. Yeah, I'm done. That's it.
Yeah, that's a state highway.
Okay.
Just that that is a state highway that is owned and operated by CDOT, but that's certainly something we can reach out to them and suggest.
Yeah, Rick, well, I would appreciate that personally. I just find it like really hard to see those lines in the dark, you know?
Anyone else?
My name is Ann Karsbeck. I live at 706 Eighth Street, and I just wanted to thank the town for the very Merry Christmas. This was amazing. So I was lucky to partake in it, but just see all of the behind the scenes work that the staff had put into it, and a lot of citizens, but takes a lot of support. And I think not just, it's not, obviously not a one-time thing, but this is by far, for somebody who's come back in town to see that much attendance, like, it's a baby that has grown. And so I just want to congratulate you all, and thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Anyone else? Okay, thank you all for speaking up. We'll move on now to our consent. Were trustees like anything removed from consent?
I would. E and F.
All right, items D and F. Anything else would like to remove?
Can I also remove item D, please?
Anything? Is there a motion to approve consent minus items D, E, and F?
Motion to approve consent for A, B, and C.
All right, trustee Wing has moved on to consent. Trustee Ayers has seconded. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Karsbeck?
Yes. All right, we'll start off with the D, 2006 Laver County Sheriff's Office Statement of Work.
Okay, so with this, I just wanted to pull it off, first of all, to praise Laver County Sheriff's Office. They always do an amazing job, and you know, it's always a reminder to me that we don't see a lot of the crime and the issues because they're doing such a great job, but that doesn't mean that those incidents aren't escalating and increasing. They're just increasing their, their force so that they can handle it, and they're doing a great job with that. So I was excited to see this. I was curious if Sergeant Williamson wouldn't mind just giving us a little bit of a detailed summary about the Community Impact Deputy is, just because I think most of the community doesn't know the difference between the Community Impact Deputy versus the regular deputy and the role and how important that is.
So the Community Impact Deputy Program was started under Sergeant Anderson when he was here. It takes a deputy and basically has them working through the community and with the community to improve quality of life issues. We've adapted a little bit of that this last year when we brought on a second deputy to include some traffic control and traffic enforcement, because it's become an ongoing issue. We continually hear complaints here from people about ongoing traffic issues. So we brought that under their scope of their, what they do. I'm trying to read through here real quick, just to give you their cornerstones for these guys.
Yeah, just put you on the spot, so.
I don't know, not have been prepared. So the Community Impact Deputy's missions provide proactive problem-solving approaches to their district to reduce crime trends while increasing the quality of life for citizens of the districts. Community Impact provides support and follow-up on cases encountered by the Patrol Division units and their districts as necessary. This has been a significant portion of Deputy Zach Anderson's position this last year. He's done an amazing job working on some high-level cases. He assisted with a homicide case, helped them do the video canvassing for that. Has worked on several other long-term burglary investigations, closed out several of those. One of those cases, he closed out 26 separate burglaries in one case against one suspect. He's also, again, this year, worked on two other strings of burglaries. One we solved within 12 hours, and another one where the case is still ongoing and arrests have yet to have been made. But we have suspects identified and in process of getting those taken care of, so. Again, the traffic enforcement, like I already mentioned, they work with local organizations, HOA's Neighborhood Watch Groups to make sure that they have someone that they can interact with. He's gone to HOAs, helped them with their Neighborhood Watch Programs. He's helped two HOAs implement FLEX cameras in their HOAs to help protect their community members. They provide assistance to the Investigations Divisions of, when the Drug Task Force for Investigations is looking for information, they contact our CID deputies and they provide assistance to them, so. And that's basically it, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that role a lot, because we've talked about the community, the bridge between the community and you guys, and so having those, you know, boots on the ground guys, they're doing a great job. And Zach does a great job, too. So we'll, he gets back soon and rehabilitated. And then I was just curious if you could just give us an update on what staff, if you don't have this right now, hopefully, okay?
I do not have stats.
Just curious what our call volumes are like.
If you give me a second, I can get it pulled up.
And I'm starting.
I'm certainly not prepared.
Scope of work, it's good for people to hear, you know, how much you guys are doing.
When I last looked at it, and as I'm pulling up, I'll let you know that we've consistently stayed either first or second for the number of calls for our district compared to other districts in the county. We're about 400 or 500 calls behind District One, which is, has our Mulberry Corridor and Hotel area. So an extremely busy district for our deputies. We've been staying pretty close behind in the second place with that, so. Sorry, second minute.
Being flexible. Just want to shine a light on all the good that you guys are really doing.
So for, so far this year, Sheriff's Office-wide, we've had a total of 54,884 calls. Thirty-six,938 of those are office-initiated, and 17,946 are dispatch calls. That's pretty consistent throughout all the districts. About 65% of our deputies' time is self-initiated, doing traffic stops, making enforcement contacts, and then 33% to 35% of the time, they're taking dispatch calls for service. Right now, calls by area, District One is showing 7,544, and we're at 5,794. And the next closest behind us is 4,824, so we're about just almost 1,000 above the next closest district, so.
Still tracking high for call volume?
Yeah, and a lot of that has to do with our deputies being extremely proactive. Our other CID deputy has a lot of skills and strengths in criminal interdiction and drug interdiction. He spent several years in Texas on a drug interdiction team, doing nothing but interdiction work on the highways. So he's been doing a lot of work on the highway, doing drug interdiction stuff. He's been very successful at that. He's gotten a few drugs, numerous weapons, and assisted another deputy in a 10-pound seizure, so.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other questions while I'm here?
Great, you guys are awesome. Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Okay, is that pretty?
Yes, thank you.
Let's move on to the other ones. We'll do I, I, now, trustee.
Yeah, I'm guessing I'll be a minority on this one, and I'm not sure what the parliamentary procedures are, but actually would like to do non-mail-in ballots and walk-in ballots.
I mean, I think it's state law, right?
Is it? Oh, not this.
So under Title 31, it is up to the Board of Trustees.
Sorry about that.
Consistent with past elections, we do have a resolution before you to set this as a mail ballot election. In the Town of Berthoud, it has been conducted as mail ballot elections since 2018, and that is consistent with, of course, the other general elections within the state of Colorado.
So what's the process?
Good to know. I thought this was just kind of the, yeah. Yeah, so.
Make a motion that it would be walk-in ballots instead of mail-in?
You just, oh, no, I think this is what the.
Oh, okay.
Just move on and see.
Sure.
Any of, any of any other questions, Randy?
Okay.
Anyone like to move on the 2026 Regular Mail Ballot Election Resolution, 2029?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Say again.
All right, trustee Ayers moved. Mayor Pro Tim has seconded. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Albrecht?
No.
Trustee Wing?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Karsbeck?
Yes. All right, resolution. Finally, consent item, 2026 Animal Control Services Contract.
Yeah, there was an email, Will, and you said you were gonna bring it up, and then it kind of overlaps with this a little bit, and I just wanted to get clarification. So Northern Colorado Wildlife Center of Fort Collins, I think was asking for us for some financial support, and then I saw this item of the Northern Colorado Humane. I just, is there any, is there any overlap there? Are we happy with what we have now? I guess I don't have a lot of history on it, and I was just wanting, again, it just seemed like the two sort of went together.
I was gonna bring the other under reports. I, we don't have anything for wildlife, right? This is for animal pets in town.
And I didn't know that. You know, if you find a wounded something, do you take it to the humane deal? Or is it literally just domestic pets? That's what was, why I asked for it to be discussed.
Certainly. So it's a little bit of both.
Okay.
With no co-humane, it is mainly domestic pets, whether that's pets the individuals bring into their facility, or it is an officer that's responding to a call in town. We coordinate with no co-humane to provide really animal control coverage seven days a week. So a lot of their coverage does go over the weekends, and then the town staff covers the hours during the week. If it is an animal that is, say, wildlife and not necessarily domestic, depending on the situation, no co-humane may be able to take care of that, or staff may be able to take care of that. If it is not something that no co-humane or staff can take care of, then we would reach out to one of these other organizations to have assistance in doing so.
Great. Thank you so much for that clarification. I'm good.
All right, is there a motion to approve the 2026 Animal Control Services Contract?
I would make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
I believe we need to make a motion on D as well. That's correct.
Yes, thank you.
Thought we voted on that. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry. He, he wrote.
Let's start with D, thank you. Is there a motion for the 2026 Laver County Sheriff's Office Statement of Work?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim has moved. Trustee Hardy has seconded on the 2026 Laver County Sheriff's Office Statement of Work. Clerk, may I roll call vote, please?
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Wing?
Did you say Wing?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Karsbeck?
Yes. All right, now finally, the motion to approve the 2026 Animal Control Services Contract.
So moved?
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, trustee Wing has moved on this. Trustee Hardy has seconded. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Karsbeck?
Yes. All right, that completes consent. We can move on now to item number two. This is a public hearing of the adoption of the 2025 Engineering Infrastructure Design Standards Construction Specifications by RAC. We have a Community Development Director, Ann Johnson.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Karsbeck, and members of the Town Board of Trustees. This item number two and three on your agenda go together. So this is the second reading, and again, what we are hearing tonight is Chapter 30, Section 36-102 is being amended to what you see in red font on your screen. Just updating the date to reflect the new Engineering and Infrastructure Design Standards and Construction specifications. Also, the Comprehensive Plan is being amended to insert a slip sheet, what you see on the screen. The only change to this from the last time is ordinance 1372. The letters, numbers, 1372, were inserted into the slip sheet. That slip sheet will be inserted as page 41 into the Comprehensive Plan. Those are the only changes that are being proposed at this time to accompany the extensive work that Luke Seber, our Development Review Engineer, along with individuals from the Public Works Team and the Operations Divisions, all helped Luke. They came together as an engineering team, even though they're in different departments and different divisions. They worked together on updating our specification standards. There have been no changes since these were first presented to you. Luke is here to answer any questions that you may have since the first reading, but as a second reading and there have been no changes, this does conclude staff's presentation.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll close it, bring it back to the board for deliberation. Seen this before, it's like, word, comments? Okay, anyone like to move on, ordinance 1371?
Let's see here. That's what repeal and reac, uh, Chapter 30, Berthoud Municipal Code. Ordinance 1371 and ordinance, am I reading the right thing? Ordinance 1371 and ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Municipal Code, specifically Section 30-6-102, Design Standards and Construction Specifications by adopting the reference to 2025 Edition of the Town of Berthoud Engineering, Infrastructure Design Standards and Construction Specifications for the purpose of regulating the design, construction, choice of materials, location, maintenance, and use of all public and private improvements.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Say again.
All right, trustee Hardy has moved on 1371. Mayor Pro Tim Murphy has seconded. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Karsbeck?
Yes. All right, 1372, we've already, we can cover this, and you already kind of covered that as well, right?
Again, move?
Yeah, I would, wait, just to be clear, do we have to do a separate, open that up to the public again?
I think you should for the item, unless you feel like you, when you asked for public comment prior, if it was for all three items, but I think it's okay to do it item by item.
Okay, thank you. Let's just do that just in case. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to ordinance 1372? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board, and, yeah, would anyone like to move on that?
I'll move. May move adopt ordinance 1372 and ordinance of the Town Board of the Town of Berthoud, amending the Town of Berthoud a comprehensive plan for the purpose of referencing the town's engineering and infrastructure design standards and construction specifications by reference.
Say again.
All right, trustee Hardy has moved on 1372. Mayor Pro Tim Murphy has seconded. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Karsbeck?
Yes. All right, finally, adoption of the Three Mile Plan. I'm gonna open this up just in case. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to 1373? Ann, would you like to present on that differently, or? Yeah, okay. Do you have one?
No.
So Mayor Karsbeck and members of the Town Board of Trustees, this is the annual adoption of our Three Mile Plan. State statute recommends that communities adopt their Three Mile Plan every year. The red line indicates that is our urban growth boundary. This is our Three Mile Plan. This is the same urban growth boundary that has been in place since the adoption of our Comprehensive Plan in 2021. It is not changing again this year. The only update on this map includes recent annexations that have gone through. Other than that, the vision designations for land uses haven't changed from what you envisioned in 2021. This is just a prescriptive adoption that the state likes to have communities adopt. What we do then is we file this map with both Weld County and Laver County, letting them know we've adopted our plan. This is where the town intends to grow in the future. This is the second reading. There have been no changes since the first reading.
Thank you. Trustees, questions? Any questions? All right, open it up to the public. Anyone like to speak to this adoption of the Three Mile Plan? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. No tips of order, any final comments on that? All right, would anyone like to move on, ordinance 1373?
I'll move. I'll move to adopt the ordinance 1373 and ordinance of the Town Board of the Town of Berthoud, adopting the Town of Berthoud Three Mile Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, trustee Hardy has moved. Trustee Wing has seconded. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Karsbeck?
Yes. Okay, great. Item number five here is the adoption of the 2026 Annual Budget, Mill Levy and P Schedule.
Thank you, Mayor Karsbeck. As you know, we made a presentation back on November 10th, walking you through our proposed annual budget. Since that meeting, we've only made a couple of changes. There were a couple of questions asked at that meeting, so we'll cover those very briefly tonight, and then happy to answer any other questions that you might have. The first question that came up, I believe, was from Mayor Pro Tim Murphy about the cost difference between fully funding HSAs for employees versus. uh, versus, uh, a reduced funding for the health savings account, uh, that's part of our benefits. If you may recall, um, our initial, um, proposed, I, I'm, no, I'm drawing a blank. Uh, our, our initial quote, uh, for our insurance premiums for staff healthcare benefits, the increase was close to twenty percent. Uh, we felt like that's not a sustainable increase. And one of the ways that we, we negotiated that rate down, um, with, through our insurance provider, but it was still a significant increase. And in order to bring that total increase in employee healthcare benefits down, uh, to that four, four and a half percent range, um, was to reduce the contribution to employee health savings accounts. So previously, we have a high deductible health plan, um, and the town has, has, um, historically fully funded an HSA up to the max, uh, tax limit allowed, um, under federal tax law. Uh, and so our solution was to reduce the amount that we contribute into the health savings accounts for employees to offset the increase in premium costs. The difference, uh, between, between what we proposed and fully funding the HSA, uh, is about a hundred and five thousand plus or minus. Um, so in order to fully fund HSA accounts, it would cost the town another a hundred and five thousand dollars. And so that, that's the answer to that question. Um, the other question that came up was just a comparison of the rates, uh, the utility rates. So, uh, as you recall, we were proposing a five percent rate increase in water and eight percent rate increase in wastewater. Um, we did do a rate comparison as part of that rate study, rate evaluation. Uh, we have a slide if, um, Clerksmore could put it up on the screen just briefly. Uh, this was done back in October, so it doesn't reflect some of the other agencies', um, rate, uh, increases. So there are proposed rate increases in many of these jurisdictions as well, as you can imagine. The average rate, um, you know, looking at, at the list of agencies across the bottom is somewhere in that a hundred and twelve dollar range. And again, you know, water rates are variable based on how much you use. So this is just saying, look, if, if a customer uses six thousand, uh, gallons in a month, uh, what does that look like? And, um, the, uh, proposed rate for somebody using six thousand gallons in Berthod, uh, would be roughly a hundred and twenty-one. So still, uh, that is, thank you, Clerksmore for highlighting that one. Um, so, you know, there are some agencies around us that are less. There are a couple of agencies near us that are a little more. Some of these, again, don't reflect rate increases that have been proposed or that are being adopted in other communities. So some of those ones that are in that, you know, a hundred and thirteen, a hundred and fourteen dollar range are likely to be very close to ours with their proposed rate increases as well. So that's an answer to that question. Happy to address that in more detail as needed. Um, let's see. I had one other item. Let me pull my list back up.
Six thousand average for the water usage?
Uh, indoor usage in the wintertime is probably pretty close, yeah. Uh, obviously, in the summertime, when people are using, you know, ten to thirty or forty thousand gallons, depending on how much they water the yards and things, that's obviously significantly variable. But, uh, we look at that winter usage because we assume there is no outdoor irrigation during that time. It's kind of the easiest apples to apples comparison, if that makes sense. And... Uh, and then we did add, um, fifteen hundred dollars into, uh, our business development budget to accommodate the Chamber Business After Hours Event that we host. Um, so we will be hosting actually that, uh, after hours event next Thursday, um, here at Town Hall. And that was a reminder to us that we needed to add some money into the budget to accommodate that for next year as well. So, uh, small increase, but that was one of the changes we made to the budget between the last meeting and this one.
What was that?
Just fifteen hundred bucks.
All right, thanks.
Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Um, otherwise, I think we mostly covered it during that November tenth meeting.
Get that. Trustees, questions?
Yeah, hi. Anybody else?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, on, on page seventeen, I don't know if you want to pull that up, or I can just speak to it. Under general, um, we've got, um, a million dollars for the arboretum.
Yep.
Okay. What is that for, specifically the million?
Uh, so if you'll, um, if you look, and maybe one Clerksmore pulls it up, it'll be easier to see. Uh, so this, uh, what Trustee Wing is referring to is the, um, capital department or the general fund, capital improvement department within the general fund. So if you'll remember, the general fund is Fund eleven. Department ten is where we put capital expenses in the general fund typically. Down at the very bottom of, it's the last line item in, uh, that department budget is, or it's the second to last, excuse me. Uh, it says arboretum transferred to sixty. And so, there we go. Uh, Clerksmore is highlighting that. I know that is small, uh, so it may be a little hard to read, but that, um, is that what you're referring to, Trustee Wing, that million dollars?
Yeah, and I think it's just going to the fifty is just the fund, like the holding fund, right?
Yeah. So sixty is that capital fund that we've created, um, that's new this year. That's the last fund in the budget, fund number sixty. Uh, and the intent is, again, that we will transfer, any, any time we have a capital project, we will be paying for it from multiple different funds, uh, both from a transparency, uh, perspective, but also, uh, for simplicity in accounting, we will move all the funding for that project out of the other funds into the capital fund. And so if, uh, Clerksmore would scroll down, there's a corresponding entry. So that's an expense line item in the general fund. There's a corresponding revenue, uh, line item all the way down in fund sixty.
Yeah, it's page forty-five.
Yep. Um, and so, that's the downtown building renovation. We can scroll past that.
Yeah.
And that is, so this one, um, number three is the arboretum. Um, you can see that highlighted in purple at the top of the page. Uh, and in that, in those revenue line items, you'll see that corresponding transfer from the general fund
Yep.
Of a million dollars.
So then the, the next corresponding, it's also related on page thirty-six. So now we're pulling from a different fund, and this time it's the one percent tail, sales tax fund.
Yeah.
And it's two point five million. So that would correspond with sixty on the two point five.
That's right.
And then if we go to the next one, which I believe is page...
And actually, Clerksmore, it may be easier just to go back to that revenue line item here, uh, or the revenue portion of the, um, capital fund. Uh, up, it's up from here. Top of the next page, I think. Yeah. Um, so if Clerksmore, uh, can just zoom out one click, I know it'd be a little bit easier to see. I am, yeah. Oh, yeah, there we go. Perfect. Thank you. So, um, all those revenue line items, those all have corresponding expense line items in the other funds.
So the third fund that it's pulling from is the twenty nineteen one percent, uh, which is three point five million. So then we've got our, our seven million for the arboretum. And, um, my colleague to the north who, you know, went on social media multiple times and just stated his concern, uh, financially for the town going forward. Um, I agree with him on that. And therefore, I, I would like to pull this arboretum until, uh, the year twenty thirty, because of the concern over the financials for the town.
Okay.
So you'd like to amend, or is, it, it turns to be amend, remove that, right?
Uh, if you, if the board was okay with the budget, otherwise, uh, you would vote to, uh, approve the budget, um, subject to amending the budget to remove, uh, revenue expenses with the arboretum, if that was something you chose to do.
That would be my only change.
Okay, thanks. I was just trying to figure out how. All right. Well, since Trustee Wing's on this, I just tried to vote. Discuss this. Other trustees agree? You do? You do? Okay. So we have two agree.
You know, there was, well, there was one other. You're gonna have to help me out here, good. But there was a, COP was mentioned in here. Um, I thought, I, I had that on one of the pages. Actually, it's on page forty-three. And, um, so I guess that, that's gotta be, I think, I think that should be part of this discussion as well, is how do we, how are we funding this stuff? And, um, I believe that it talks about, uh, COP expenses.
Yeah, at the top there with Richardson Park COP payment.
So, uh, with respect to the COP and, and, uh, just to orient everybody a little bit, so there are also, um, there are, actually, Clerksmore, if you could go back, sorry to make you jump back and forth, but, um, if you can go back to the Capital Projects Fund. If we look at the Richardson Park, uh, portion of the Capital Projects Fund, what we presented to you back in November was, um, transferring a variety of, uh, funds from the general fund, the park development fund, medical marijuana, um, seven percent excise tax, or the marijuana seven percent excise tax, the, um, nineteen ninety-eight one percent fund and the two thousand nineteen one percent fund. So you can see those, those are all transfers of cash from our existing savings account or reserves, same, same term, to, into this fund in order to help pay for that project. Uh, I have it listed as COP revenue. I suppose that's really, uh, probably not an accurate description because you haven't chosen whether or not to do COPs. That would be financing revenue. So whether that's a bond or a COP, it would be financing revenue. It would be...
And the question on this would be, does that twenty-eight million, it's, although it's under the heading of Richardson Park, is it exclusively for Richardson Park? Cause I don't know if the COP shows up.
Our suggestion is that it would be.
Okay.
Um, and so that, that would be the revenue portion. The expense side, um, Clerksmore, if you could scroll, uh, actually, so, you won't see it here because we, you only approve a budget one year at a time. That's, that's state law. Um, when we showed you the prior budgets, uh, what we showed you was, um, it's future years so that you could kind of have an idea of what that looks like. You're not approving future years. If you chose to issue some kind of debt, whether it's a bond or through certificates of participation, uh, you would pay for that through corresponding transfers in future years to cover the debt service. We would transfer that money out of the nineteen ninety-eight one percent fund and the two thousand nineteen one percent fund. I think what we showed you, uh, as a proposed, um, total was one point nine million in total. Nine hundred thousand from the nineteen ninety-eight one percent fund and a million from the two thousand nineteen one percent fund in order to cover the debt service for that into the future. That, those would get transferred out of those funds into this fund in order to defuse that debt. But you're not approving those future year expenses because you can't do that. Uh, you can only approve one year at a time.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so, Trustee Wing, I, I disagree with postponing the arboretum for, I guess, a couple reasons. Um, I know we've all been having conversations with, with the public about budgeting and about spending large amounts of money on capital projects, right? It's sort of, I think, the phrase that keeps getting passed around is a wonderful problem to have because we're trying to decide where to spend all these large sums of cash. But I think as much as Richardson and the pool, wherever it may go, is a sticking point in arguments and conversations around town. I think that one of the things that is not a sticking point tends to be the arboretum. It's open space, trails. Um, it's finishing a project that began years ago with the Wagner Farm acquisition. It's a crossroads and an entryway into town which needs to be started sooner rather than later just because of the fact that it is an arboretum and those trees are gonna take ten years to grow. So if we were to wait a year, five years, ten years to get this project started, those trees in five, ten, fifteen years are going to be, um, they are what's going to suffer and the amenity itself is going to suffer the longer we wait. So I understand where you're coming from with your, uh, comment because we are kind of dealing with issues of money. But I think with the surveys that are out, port recommendations, comments from, um, everyone seems to be supportive of this project. And with all of the, I think, um, difficult conversations that the board in the town has had in the past couple of months especially, I think that we need kind of a win to get everyone back on the same page. And I, I think that, um, this, this parkland being the center attraction needs to be started sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and I would just say, again, we talked about, we saw that, um, you know, Richardson Park checked just about every one of the boxes that people were looking for. And as I think about our youth, and I think about our young families, um, and I think about the arboretum with, with trails, and then I think about the pool and the ball fields and, and the parks there. Um, I, I just struggle with us spending this money on something that I think will not get near the use of our community. And they've been waiting for decades for that. So that's just, that would be my comment back on that. And then the second part of that also is, um, Administrator Kirk said this is the twenty twenty-six budget, so this is what's showing seven million dollars. And I don't think that's the total bill. So what does future years look like from an expense standpoint?
Yep. So, um, if you'll scroll up again, um, Clerksmore, just, oop, not that far, just right up to the arboretum. Um, and so, uh, what you'll see here is that we had, uh, a million and a half dollar expense in this year, um, to kind of move money into that fund is what we're showing.
That was estimated, so that's gonna happen.
This is all estimated, yeah. Um, that, that's just a, a, an accounting move, right? Taking a million and a half dollars from the, um, park development fund and moving it into the capital fund for the execution of this project. So total, we would move eight and a half million dollars into that fund. Uh, what you see is a little over five and a half million dollars of expense in twenty twenty-six.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what you don't see, again, because what you're approving tonight is twenty twenty-six budget, you're not approving future years. But what was shown on November tenth was additional expenses in twenty twenty-seven, uh, to finalize the construction, knowing that that's not gonna be, that, that, the construction will extend from twenty twenty-six into twenty twenty-seven, assuming that we start now. Um, or soon. Uh, so there's, um, roughly eight and a half million dollars in total construction expense in order to build the arboretum is what's currently estimated. Eight and a half million in total expense to construct. Uh, and then in future years, in, uh, other funds where we cover open space and park maintenance, we also increased, uh, dollar amounts in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine in that kind of look ahead that we showed previously, that was included in the packet previously, uh, for increased maintenance expenses to cover some of the maintenance of the arboretum.
Okay, thank you so much.
Or to cover the maintenance of the arboretum.
Again, just go, just with all the discussion about, I mean, I, I'm, I'm a fiscal conservative and just with all the comments around that and it going public, I just wonder if we should hold. Uh, I understand a hundred percent where you're coming from. I'm, I was trying to support some of the other comments that were made. And then, um, you know, I don't know, I don't, I don't know what we could do with three and a half million. How many trees could we put in? How many, you know, paths could we put in? You know, another challenge would be, could we cut this number in half? Cause we haven't had real discussion on the, on the details of this. We never, they never came back to us with the numbers. Yeah.
Um, since the discussion is open, Administrator Kirk, um, for financing, these are gonna be big round numbers, I apologize. So please correct me if I'm way off. Um, if financing were to move forward with Richardson, it would be around thirty? And that worked out to around two million a year?
Yep.
Um, in the grand scheme of things, I'm gonna ask you to do math, I apologize. Uh, in the grand scheme of things, if we were to finance twenty because we freed up seven to eight million, that would cut five hundred thousand? Give or take?
So the, the P, the payment on our current COP is around a one point two million. So the, the payment on our current C O Ps around one point two million, am I right, Cindy? Yep. And that was significantly a lower interest rate than what we'd probably get now. That was for twenty-four million dollars is what we financed. So that'll give you some context. I would expect the payment to be higher because we're going to pay a higher interest rate right now. The market's a little bit different. Probably a percent and a half more than what we paid for the, for those C O Ps for the rec center. But yeah, I would say twenty million is probably in that one point two range. I mean, I could, I can actually run the math for you real fast, but it's probably a reasonable guess, yeah.
So I think, thinking long-term, because, because I understand the conversation, right? And I, I agree with you to be concerned about trying to switch projects around and trying to find money one way or another. But I wonder, from my point of view, I wonder if cutting this amount of money from one project to another is worth the long-term detriment of not starting the arboretum for half a million or more per year based on the other expenditures that would be out there for financing or other parks. Does that, was that the issue?
Yeah, I guess the bottom line would be, we, we're here to think about the residents, right? So would they prefer an arboretum or would they prefer an outdoor pool, right? That might be one of the questions we probably should ask.
Other thoughts?
I do have comments on that, but I wasn't sure if we want to keep doing questions and, or do you have any suggestions?
It's kind of an amendment and then after this we can move on.
Well, the reason why I struggle with arboretum being standalone is kind of similar to what you're saying is it will, would, will pull from funds. And so it's really hard to approve other park funds or hold off on other parks when we've allocated such a significant amount to one project. I would really prefer that all of it go before the public and have it be a comprehensive parks project plan, where they're looking at the entire scope, the entire cost, and they can vote and decide on the entire project and have it hit every mark instead of just some of the survey results, but all of them. Because I think we can, it's just a matter of how those puzzle pieces fit together. And so for me, it's an important puzzle piece and I, I, I'm concerned about just completely pulling work out for twenty twenty-six because I know that it would mean a lot to the landowners that to see some progress made on that property, or not the, where the landowners, but the family that did donate the land, it would mean a lot to them to see some progress made. And so I would love to see progress made, but if it were up to me, I think the most wise choice would be to put it all in a comprehensive project before the town to move on instead of harping out eight and a half million or more and having that be removed from the entire scope of projects for the future. That's, that's kind of, that will be, I mean, I would lead toward removing it for that one purpose, to bring this back to voters as soon as possible with a more comprehensive plan to vote on.
Okay, so I think with your argument, trustee Albrecht, it would still ultimately be to remove this. You have different reasoning.
Only if it's going to come back before voters. I don't want to delay it and not have some progress made. But I do think it, if the voters came back and said this wasn't a priority for them, I would be ashamed of us for pushing it through.
If I may, Mayor Carstek, with, with respect to the idea of putting it on the ballot, which I think is a fine idea, if that's what the trustees would prefer, I don't know that that makes a big difference from a budgeting standpoint. So I think you can look at it one of two ways. What you're doing by including funding in the budget for these two projects is saying that you intend to execute these projects. What you're not doing is committing to a bond or a C O P or even to construct them at all. What you're doing is saying this is the direction we intend to head and this is how much money we're setting aside in order to make that happen. As we finalize designs, we get, you know, more refined cost estimates based on new phasing plan and new pool design and all these other things that we've talked about. You, you might choose to park the project. You might choose at that point to place a question on the ballot to fund that and whatever else you want to fund. I think there's a lot of things that, that will, regardless of what you do with this budget, you will have to make several other decisions before we construct anything. That's true of both the arboretum and Richardson. What you're doing by including funding in the budget is saying this isn't, this is how we intend to do it and this is how much money we plan to devote to it. But that doesn't mean that you're doing it. Does that make sense? So I think you can look at it one of two ways. You can, you can kind of continue that commitment. Look, we want to build the arboretum and we think we have eight and a half million dollars to do that and here's where it's coming from and this is how we intend to execute the project and when. Twenty twenty-six is what we're saying. Again, we're going to have to bid that. We're going to have to make sure that our bids are within our, our current estimates and budgeted funds. You will have to award that bid in a public meeting and all, you know, there's, there's all these steps that have to occur, right? And if it comes back and it's more expensive than we can afford, we can, we can, you know, get creative and cut things out of it. We've done that before, or you can choose not to build it at all. And then you can modify the budget to take that money back out of these funds, right? Once it's here, it's, until it's actually spent, it's just a paper exercise. It's an important paper exercise because it says this is what we're planning to do. We're going to build these two projects. That's what we're saying with this budget. But that doesn't mean you've actually done it. Does that make sense?
But if I could, Administrator Kirk?
Sure.
Just real quick, we are appropriating tonight this budget if it goes forth. And for a project like Richardson, for example, if they're not ten million, that would be appropriated and authorized for staff to deploy immediately?
No, not without your authorization. I mean, we wouldn't be building anything. So, no, we couldn't spend ten million dollars. I can't see any conceivable way that town staff could spend ten million dollars without you approving it first.
And sometime during twenty twenty-five, discussions came up and a comment was, well, it's in the budget, like it's a foregone conclusion that is happening. And I just want to make sure we've got a stopgap if we all, if the majority decides not to do something. I just want to be clear that you're clearly stating, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean it's happening. There's still a bunch of hurdles, if you will, that the majority would have to approve. Is that accurate?
I would say that that's a hundred percent accurate. And so I think it's important that the way our, the way our budget works, I have certain authorities, the town administration, that you've granted to me and that I've exercised historically to do a lot of different things. One of those is like we hire consultants to execute work that's budgeted for. And, and we, we do that within the context of the budget that you've authorized. And so in those cases, yes, we can go and spend, you know, if I want to hire a design consultant and we said we're going to design this project and it's, you know, forty or sixty thousand dollars, we can go and hire those consultants so long as it's within the context of the budget. Big ticket items, you guys just approved at the last meeting a design contract for the kind of final piece of the Richardson construction drawings. We would bring those to you because they're big, they're, they're larger ticket items. Now, we don't have a defined threshold. Some of that is a judgment call from our perspective. But especially things that are controversial, we would want your, your feedback on. You know, from a personnel standpoint, you authorize a budget for personnel. That's based on a certain number of positions. I can tell you, we budgeted for two positions this year at least that we didn't end up hiring. But had we chosen to, you know, circulate or advertise for those positions, interview and hire, I would do that without coming back to you. You don't approve every individual employee that we hire, right? So there is, our purchasing policy says, you know, there, there are thresholds under which you need to approve certain activities and, but again, just because the money is in the budget doesn't mean it's spent. And, and you could see that because every year we bring back a, a budget at mid-year that adjusts for all the year-end total revenues and expenses that we had for the year prior. And what I think you've seen every single year for the last eight years at least is that we spent less money than we told you we were going to spend or that we planned to spend in the budget. So just because we put it in the budget doesn't mean it's getting spent. In the context of these capital projects, you will one hundred percent have to authorize the construction of these projects before we spend money building anything.
A couple of quick thoughts on that. And first of all, thank you. The budget to me demonstrates what we're capable of doing in the next calendar year. And it's also showing our fiscal responsibility for utilizing tax dollars for furthering the quality of life for our citizens. It's not just sitting in accounts collecting dollars, right? It's actually being utilized and used to improve value for our community. So I think having it in the budget to me is showing that we can afford it and that's why we're having the conversation. It's not, we're not having the conversation before we determine whether we can afford it. And so thank you for determining the mechanisms that we can make those things work so that we can have this conversation even. So I understand what you're saying, that it needs, it could be in there as that placeholder. Would it be possible to add verbiage to, when we approve the budget, to state that all capital projects must be approved in public forum by the board before starting or commencing the project? Could we add verbiage like that just to make people feel confident that those things aren't just going to be pursued because we agreed on them tonight?
Sure. And I, I have no issue with you guys making that declaration. I mean, that is the requirement for us anyway. So I think that's perfectly appropriate, just so that it's clear for everyone. I can't recall constructing a capital project without the board's approval.
I mean, I'm not so you're doing.
I would not authorize the expenditure of millions of dollars in funds for construction without your approval first.
And I think we know that. I think there's been some questions that have come up and maybe, that maybe we could appease that concern by just stating that and, you know, as part of the adoption that those will come back and they will be publicly vetted and addressed.
And if it's helpful, you know, we can come back and, and give you guys a, one of, actually Cindy and I just met this morning. We were talking about some of her goals for next year and one of those was to review and update the purchasing policy as appropriate. So maybe we need to bring that back to you so that you know what the approved purchasing policy is and maybe you don't recall or you, maybe we haven't ever walked you through it, depending on your time on the board. Just so that everybody's really clear about, you know.
Threshold.
Yeah, thresholds and all that stuff. You know, it talks about how, how big of a purchase we can make without issuing a purchase order internally and what needs to get bid and what doesn't have to be bid. And, you know, there, there's a lot of information in that purchasing policy that gives us some of those guardrails. But, you know, we obviously can't come and ask you for permission to spend every dollar we have either. That would be horribly inefficient. But there are appropriate thresholds where we're not going to go spend a million plus dollars on anything without getting your explicit approval first via a, a public vote because you guys don't do anything that's not a public vote. Yeah, good discussion.
Are there two, anyone else who would like to see that removed from twenty thirty?
Well, in all fairness, I think my opinion changed based on that conversation. Just saying that I'm, I'm great with it being in there as a placeholder. If we are able to have agreement and move forward, then it's there and available to be utilized.
So am I, Mayor.
Okay, great. You were, you were going to ask, do you have other questions?
No, that, no, that was good. Thank you.
Any others?
Yeah, I have a few questions. So I appreciate you, Administrator Kirk, bringing up the delta on the H S As. Is that included in here and is there a line in for that?
We did not include the delta. So what we budgeted for was the total increase in employee benefits, not including that additional H S A contribution.
I would be supportive of making up the delta of general leverage effect.
Yes, that would, that would generally, that would be the general fund generally. That's not a hundred percent the case because it depends on which department the employee works in, but.
Are there thoughts?
It would move for that to be amended and added.
Is there a second on that?
I have a couple of questions, just to clarify so I'm on the right page. Sorry, just to clarify so I'm on the right page. You said it was about to change the delta from what's being put into the H S A accounts now versus what it would be for town employees to fully fund would be about a hundred thousand.
About a hundred and three, a hundred and five. Am I getting that right? Yeah.
And that depends on department position, et cetera.
I'm sorry, what was that?
That depends on department position, et cetera.
Yeah, you know, some, some employees are on our family plan and they pay a little higher deductible, obviously, than people that are just individual healthcare employees. And so if you're, if you have an individual plan through the town, there's a, there's a federal cap of how much you can contribute into that H S A. So they get less in their H S A than employees that are on the family plan.
And so this motion would be covering the distance.
This would cover the dis, that would cover the difference for basically all full-time employees that are on our medical benefit plan.
Okay.
Just, oh, sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. But just a, a comment, I guess, is that this feels a little bit like we're getting into the weeds of how town operations run. And so if, if town staff would appreciate having this amended and this is something that Chris feels is important, I would absolutely support it. But if it's, it's an arbitrary move, I'm struggling with that just because I always had a precedent of us determining certain town operations, like how staffing is handled. I think he does a wonderful job and his, his staff is very fond and happy of how they, how their jobs are. And, and so I just want to be cautious about getting into the weeds, I suppose.
To be fair, I think this is about the budget. I think you could make that argument about the arboretum session, which I think is important, too. I just think anything in here.
It, it certainly is and I think it is a discretionary choice in some ways, right? I mean, we're, we made, we made a choice to, from an executive leadership, excuse me, executive leadership team to reduce the total H S A payments in order to keep our increase at what we felt like was a more sustainable amount. We've been really fortunate. Our, our, our health insurance plan has performed well, but it is generally self-funded, right? And so we've, when you have really big claims against the insurance money that, that we pay, that the town pays for employees, we get these really big jumps in premium costs, right? It's all risk calculations for the insurance companies. And so, you know, we had a, we had a poor year last year from a performance standpoint on the, we had a couple of very large claims that significantly impacted our, our premium costs. Now, I think generally speaking, our premium costs are still pretty affordable compared to a lot of other insurance plans for similar jurisdictions around us. And I think we still offer a very high, a very low-cost, high-value medical plan for our employees. So I think we're still very competitive in the marketplace, even with a reduced H S A amount. Because I think, you know, again, we've, we've historically fully funded an H S A that covers almost the total max out-of-pocket expense that an employee could experience in a given year. And so, you know, they still, they do have some max out-of-pocket expense they would have to cover before insurance covers everything else. But it's a, it's a relatively low dollar amount and, and the amount that they contribute toward premiums, we, we cover a hundred percent of the premium cost for an individual employee. Now, that's not true for spouse or family. They're, they have to cover some of that premium expense, but employees are a hundred percent covered. They do not pay premiums for medical benefits. And so I think we still have a very, excuse me, we still have a very generous benefit package even relative to the market around us with a reduced H S A payment. We just did that to try to keep those increases at a lower percentage amount, thinking that, that those are not things that we could sustain year over year over year. Now, if we only had one year where it was sixteen or eighteen percent and next year it was three or four, we know we could probably eat that as a town. We just felt like that was a more responsible thing for us to do from a, a fiscal perspective. So totally, I, for what it's worth, I very much appreciate Mayor Pretender's.
Specifically what this is, like literally what's the dollar bound? Do you, you know what?
Yeah.
Since we're talking about, let's find out.
Yes, a hundred percent. You mean, like for an individual employee?
You put it in the budget. Now, we're challenging that. I'm just asking, but what exactly are we talking about?
Maybe what's more, and Cindy, if I get these numbers wrong, thank you for being, Cindy Leach, our awesome finance director that you all know and that we all love is here. So she will correct me if I get some of these numbers wrong. But the H S A reduction that we, oh, gosh dang it, I just, I'm sorry, I just closed that accidentally. I've got to pull it back up.
While you're looking, this is just a very common practice in business. This is what businesses do every single year, right? Costs keep going up, so they look at, you know, what, how can we mitigate some of that? And I think, thank you for doing that. I think that's exactly what you're supposed to do. So, so this isn't some arbitrary thing that is out of the blue. This is a very common practice.
So for a, for an individual employee, it's probably easy, the easiest thing to start with. The total I R S limit for H S A contributions for the year is forty-four hundred dollars, four thousand four hundred dollars. That's the max that the I R S will allow you to contribute into your health savings account on a tax-free basis. The twenty twenty-six town contribution was reduced. Instead of doing that full forty-four hundred dollars into their H S A account, what we're suggesting is twenty-seven forty. So if you, that basically means that if you kind of max out your healthcare costs and you hit your max out-of-pocket, it's going to be an additional, that the town isn't covering that would come out of your bank account instead of your H S A town funds or through your insurance coverage. It would increase your potential max out-of-pocket expense over the course of the year by.
Hundred and forty dollars, a hundred and forty dollars a month approximately.
Yeah, but that's only if you actually have to use it, right? So if you never go to the doctor, it doesn't, it doesn't impact you directly at all.
Yeah.
That was actually why we chose not to ask employees to cover the higher premium costs because if we said, hey, look, we can't really sustain, you know, sixteen or eighteen percent premium expense increase. And so we want you to make up the difference. That's money that you have to pay out of your pocket, out of your paycheck every month to cover that premium cost. But if you never go to the doctor, that doesn't benefit you at all.
Exactly.
Now, reducing the H S A expense means you have less in your H S A account. But if you don't ever go to the doctor because you're healthy and you're, and you're taking good care of yourself or you're fortunate, you don't have any accidents, whatever. then it doesn't impact you, it, there's no direct financial impact to you other than you have a little less in your savings account at the end of the year.
Got it.
Does that make sense? So that was, that was kind of our creative solution to our our health insurance premium still went up by that big percentage amount. Uh, but rather than ask employees to pay for it directly, we reduce the amount we pay them.
That's great.
Uh, and and it ends, it ends up being a net increase that's lower, but also doesn't require them to pay out-of-pocket every month. Does that make sense? And so if you do max out, well, yes, you're going to have a couple thousand dollars more out of expense. Hopefully, you're not in that situation, right? You're not having major surgery, you're not having some, you know, ongoing chronic health issue that you have to deal with, you know? If you're just going to the doctor, you know, you might hit up the urgent care because you get the flu or COVID or something. This isn't going to impact you directly, but it will if you have some major medical issue. Our employees understood that. I will say, I think, when we presented that to them during open enrollment, I think we got overwhelmingly positive response and that like they very much appreciated that we thought through it in that way and they would rather not pay more out-of-pocket for premium and just get a little less in their HSA and you know, try to avoid those large health expenses.
Okay. Just want to address this, uh, on the motion, but it's kind of a, is there other support for moving the HSA to one hundred percent?
Yeah.
Want to do a?
We can just keep going. Additional, oh, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, thanks.
An additional question, uh, with recent events on the Sunoco project. With that two million remaining there, what is that disbated for at this point? Is that something we should?
I think that's another um, it's a similar kind of conversation to the park discussion. What we've budgeted is we want to spend money to redevelop the Sunoco building. We have we will be pivoting, obviously, in our design effort. We will not be designing the space that we would have under the H and S lease. Uh, but we still want to do the exterior improvements, we still want to do the parking lot. You know, we, until we finalize the infrastructure demands and the retaining wall reconstructions and till we really understand exactly what all those things mean through the design process, we won't have a really formal final number on what it's going to cost. I would suggest that we hold money there, I mean, I think we still want to do something with that building. I would assume the board still wants to do something with that building. We have, you know, we had a couple of Plan Bs that we've been talking about for a few months and we have some potential other partners.
According to that, that's a some Plan Bs.
Staff has, yes, that we intend to bring to you as suggested possibilities, there's a couple of different ideas. Uh, but we don't want to do any of that until we get some formal acknowledgement from the powers that be, whether that's DOLA or the US Treasury, that we can modify the plan that we had originally given them. So, you know, we told them what we were spending the money on. Uh, that plan is changing. Uh, as you know, that plan is 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 has changed. And so until we create a new plan, we want to have an idea of like, here's the three or four things that staff thinks might make sense and some of the partners that we've talked to and some of the businesses we've heard from and what of these things would be eligible expenses, if any? Because we're going to have to tell them we're going to spend it on something different than what we spent it on. Or that I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. So until we get a formal sign-off from them, I don't want to bring it to you and give you a bunch of great ideas that we can't do, so you know, we hope to be able to do that by February at the latest. But if we can do it sooner, we will.
I don't think I've got any additional questions.
If there's any other questions regarding the board.
Oh, I just wanted clarification on the mill levy, setting the mill levy. And just helping you with the language, can you just go over that real quick, like how that is it saying that there's a mill levy increase or I'm trying to understand the verbiage in that, can you help me?
Which part are you talking about specifically, just so I can pull it up? We can all.
The thirteen fifty one at the very end.
Yeah, ordinance thirteen seventy-four, setting the levy.
Thank you, Clarence Moore. So, um, and actually Cindy may be, uh, better equipped to explain to you how the mill levy is calculated. Um, so there are some statutory provisions about how we do that, there are caps. There's this kind of worksheet, as dumb as that sounds, that you have to, you know, kind of fill out, that uh, breaks it all down, but maybe Cindy could just kind of talk through the mill levy process, just for how that mill levy gets set.
Illustration in our agenda of the actual mill levy numbers, that may be easier to for everyone to digest rather than the verbiage.
And and I do think it's a total, it's a reduction in total mill levy.
It's actually a reduction, you're not really adopting a reduction or an increase, you're just adopting the amount, the the mill levy number.
But, you know, relative to twenty twenty-five.
It is less than twenty, yeah, it is less.
And I think that's where my division is, seeing the changes in the numbers, how is that determined and just for my understanding?
So, um, every year we get a it's called a statutory property tax revenue limitation, and we get that from the state of Colorado. That tells us the maximum amount that we can collect in a property tax mill levy. And then we get our valuation from Larimer County and Weld County. And taking those numbers, there's a calculation that we have to use to determine what the mill levy needs to be so that when it's uh, multiplied by the valuation, the totals are less than that maximum amount that you can collect. So we, each year, um, if you look at the certification form, we, uh, our our actual mill levy that has been voted on is six point six three six, not counting the police. And, um, each year we have to reduce it if we need to reduce it so that we're not collecting too much. There have been years that are six point six three six is actually less than our limit, so we're not collecting our limit, but we can't collect more than that. So we do the temporary reduction to be able to keep it within the maximum amount that we can collect.
And could you just speak to why there's two gross assessed valuations? One looks like it's two hundred and ninety-two million and the other one, I think, is like twenty-five million, why are there two?
Uh, well, one of them is Larimer County.
Okay.
Um, that's two hundred and ninety-two million.
Okay.
And then Weld County, so we.
Great, perfect, thank you so much.
And then the the police, the three, the three mills for the police, there's no limit on that. The limit is just on the general operating. And then the refunds and abatements are what we can collect because last year there might have been people that uh, protested their property tax and they were given, okay, well, we're going to make it less. Well, our limit was based on the fact that we were going to collect that money. So when they give people refunds, then we're allowed to collect that this year. So that's why we can add that little bit in there.
We don't go back and collect from that property owner, just so that we're clear, it's just that total amount that it gets calculated.
That'd help, that's how I thought it worked, but I just wanted to make sure when seeing the numbers changes that there's not something different going on.
That it?
Yeah, so we use the cap from the state, the evaluation from the county, and then we kind of work backwards into what's the max in the levy that we can utilize. Good question.
All right, I'll go ahead and note this up to the public, is anyone in the audience who should speak to this? Would it be all right, uh, clerk or?
Is that okay?
Yes, it is. Can I do this for all these ordinance, one, one?
I think that's appropriate, if you if you just want to make clear that we're going to hold a public hearing for the, all the ordinances associated with the budget.
Okay, perfect, yeah. Resolution two thousand twenty-five, um, dash twenty-five, dash twenty-six, and ordinance thirteen seventy-four, so anything related to the twenty-sixth budget? All right, let's start up here, public comment with Whitney Way.
All right, Whitney Way, three four nine Welch Avenue. Couple different things I want to touch on, first off, thank you staff and trustees for lighting up downtown so brightly this season. Uh, the fact is truly incredible, I think the whole community is really excited about it. Uh, this past weekend, a very merry birthed event was very successful, thanks to collaboration between town, staff, partners, businesses, and volunteers. I want to start by recognizing and appreciating everyone's work, especially given how many different departments and organizations were involved. Uh, you should absolutely celebrate the success of the event. And let's also plan for next year. What the event's growth has revealed is that we don't currently have a clear or formal funding structure to support it. The community experience, the community experiences this as a town-wide event, but the expenses are spread informally across different groups. This makes long-term planning difficult and places a large burden on businesses and partners who are volunteering time and resources. For the event to remain sustainable, safe, and high quality, I'm asking for a defined town budget line for a very merry birthed. A very merry birthed brings thousands of people downtown, creates significant economic activity. It deserves a budgeting approach that sets everyone up for success year after year. And then here's my second item. Uh, and update, the newly merged Birthed Main Street Downtown Birthed Merchant Collaborative is becoming a formalized Main Street program with the goal of applying for official designation in April twenty twenty-six. For several years now, uh, DBMC, the collaborative, has been doing Main Street-style work. Our events have brought thousands of people downtown and created real economic impact, even with no financial support. This demonstrates that the Main Street model can succeed here. Birthed Main Street will absolutely continue this work right now without official designation, but becoming a designated program will unlock additional resources, funding, consulting, and technical assistance that would strengthen and expand downtown efforts. As we prepare a long-term strategic plan and twenty twenty-six work plan, what we truly need is clear municipal support and a defined financial commitment to build a sustainable Main Street program. Birthed has a real opportunity here and town investment is essential to making that possible. I invite you to learn more about the Main Street program at tomorrow evening's Main Street open house with representatives from DOLA. Uh, it's Wednesday, December tenth, five thirty PM at City Star Brewing. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, Christine Torres, three nine three zero Arley Drive. So I'm also here to comment on the huge success of a very merry Christmas um, in Birthed or very merry Birthed. But I also want to suggest on how to keep it sustainable for years to come. So as we all know, the town lit up throughout the day and night. We saw our friends and families and new visitors enjoying our local shopping, eating, cowboy Christmas vendors, campfires, Dickens caroling at the Birthed Historical Society, the ice skating, trees from wrestlers, and the finale was the parade and the tree lighting ceremony. I'd love to see this event, a very merry birthed, be an annual sustainable event. I did work during the parade, during the tree lighting, and with the Historical Society as well as the volunteers, so I have a firsthand knowledge of all the impact it was on everyone. And it would be in our best interest for the planning in the future, for it to be a budgeted line item of thirty thousand. And I'll tell you why. My background, uh, for seven years around homecoming parade for the high school in our small old town parade. After that, I, um, had the pleasure of watching it come back after COVID um, in twenty twenty-two with around twelve floats or so, Tim would know the exact number. Um, twenty-three, we had forty-three floats in twenty twenty-four, we had forty floats and we had three thousand five hundred people by phone pings. And in twenty twenty-five, this year, I have a list right here of sixty floats. And, um, we saw about double the people lined up, because again, I ran the parade and I saw it. So I'm anticipating when you get your phone pings, it'll be about five thousand people. I share these numbers to show how much the town values this and the tree lighting ceremony, which also we saw double the amount of people. The thing about the tree lighting ceremony is, for the past few years, I've been, I financially actually paid for it a few years back and then the Grim Ditches have. So we have been paying for it out of our own pockets, our own time, and it's not sustainable. If I go away, if Grim Ditches, if other people go away, you're going to burn out the volunteers and the money. And I'm just speaking from my heart here, you guys know, I just, that's how I work. So, um, and we all saw the post, we all saw people, I love our town. Well, so did other people, I saw many other people come and enjoy our town, it was on Fox thirty-one News. Christina Portia put it out there, and so we are growing. And I do know some of the business owners told us they had extraordinary numbers. So I am asking that you guys put a line item on there for a very merry birthed. And, you know, I don't know if it's going to be brought by the Birthed Main Street program, by the town, a collaboration, I don't know. Like he had mentioned, it's on the budget, we don't know how we're executing it, but it's there. So I ask that for us to be able to continue such a beautiful event enjoyed by so many people. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Uh, new share regarding these line items. Hard to, I guess, add tonight with the number, never thought of that up.
Um, well, so I think there are some numbers that have been tossed out. Um, as as Ms. Torres mentioned, you know, she's suggesting thirty thousand, I think what the town spent this year was a little less than ten on the very merry birthed event. Uh, we spent about twenty twenty to twenty-three on the July third event, not including the fireworks, right? That's a kind of a unique, uh, expense. Uh, so thirty seems like a lot to me, but I mean, I think that's that's absorbable within our existing budget. I do also think that as we I I know what's going to happen, uh, because this is the right thing to do and this is things that are going on, right? Um, there will be kind of a debrief of the event, right? We meet with the business owners and organizations that participated, give feedback, and talk about plans for next year. What should change, what should increase, what shouldn't happen? You know, there'll be a logistics meeting internally with, um, public work staff and and sheriff and and all that, right? So we'll kind of gather up that feedback, we'll refine that plan. And if there is a need for additional funding to support that event, um, that's something we could add a dedicated line item for. I think this is an interesting question for us as a, as a community to consider, as a town to consider. How do we which events do we support and which ones do we not? Um, in this case, uh, we, like, we don't have a dedicated line item for Birthed for Birthed Day, but we contribute heavily to the, uh, cost of Birthed Day through logistical support, um, through our partnership and our sponsorship with the Birthed Chamber and some of those things. You know, we do, we could outline each event that we host and and be very specific about what those expenses are. A very merry birthed is kind of an interesting one, it's this collaboration of businesses, organizations, the town. I don't know that I would say it's the town's event. Um, although we certainly had a strong hand in helping to kind of organize it all, uh, but there were so many people that volunteered and contributed as was already talked about, so that's a long way of saying, I think it's up to you. If you want to dedicate a specific line item, we can do that. I don't think there's an issue with that, we can do that now, we can do that after we have a clear plan for what next year looks like and what changes we'd like to make, because I think everybody we've already gotten lots of feedback, there's a long, long list of ideas and changes and suggestions and critiques and all that that we've already heard. So we can put that plan together and you can always add that to the budget, uh, long before the event takes place next year. So again, you could do that tonight, or you could do that next year. With regard to Main Street support, uh, Ms. Wade did send me an email, uh, earlier this afternoon or or this morning. Or maybe it was yesterday afternoon, I don't know, so it's all kind of running together. Just quoted a number of twenty-five thousand, uh, potentially in support. You could choose to add that to the budget, I think we're still going to want to have an agreement in place like we do with the other, you know, we have an agreement with the Historical Society and with, uh, Wildfire and all the other groups that we, um, support. Or that we contract with, we'd want to do the same thing, I think, to to kind of define what that is with Main Street, but you could go ahead and include money in the budget to do that. Again, we'd bring that to you and kind of finalize what that agreement is, just because, again, this is the theme of tonight, just because it's in the budget, doesn't mean we cut a check, right? Uh, doesn't mean we spend the money, but you could you could identify a commitment uh, that you intend to make in a total dollar amount that we could include in the budget, and then we can define exactly how that gets done. You can improve that be in agreement with Main Street at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Thoughts on this?
Yeah, I have a couple thoughts that I'd like y'all's feedback on. I, I think, I guess one way to do it would be to go ahead and either put in a line item for both of them today or to have to wait until there's some sort of cost analysis for these two events specifically. I think another way related to that would be to possibly have a future study session or agenda item that would sort of detail some of these events, maybe have an agenda item or a study session specifically on what kinds of events does the town contribute to? How much does it contribute? That way, we can have a better understanding of maybe where we're lacking or maybe where we can move some monies from one place to another. I don't know if that's something that you guys would be.
I think it'd be great to have an agenda item or study session, either or. To talk about events specifically, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about what the town does and does not do and how much money we spend or do not spend. So I think that would be a great opportunity to have that conversation.
Other thoughts on this?
Just a couple. I think obviously that was an amazing success, and not only a success in bringing people, but a success in showing that we can all work together to do something extraordinary. And so we definitely want to build on that. You know, it really hits, it hits me when someone says that they're funding things that, you know, cost them a lot, but wouldn't cost the town a lot. And so that, to me, would be an important part of that conversation is what can the town absorb? And I think, and this might be because of the scale of this event and because of the town's contribution, potential contribution, it should probably be a town event instead of, you know, this ambiguous money change. It could be if the town is being asked for a significant amount of funds for an event, then it becomes the town's event to orchestrate and keep all of those tight-knit relationships intact and keep those, you know, when you do your after-review and build on that. I think that might actually help kind of make it more cohesive for future years. So in that case, I think if it's a town run event, run event, it's really easy to allocate funds to say, this is, we saw this work, it's appropriate to absorb those costs so that hard-working volunteer organizations aren't, aren't footing that anymore. And thank you for everyone who takes that on. So those might be good for that conversation, like you said, for a future meeting. If you want to take it, then we can, you know, make sure that's funded for the future.
So is there any issue putting it, coming up with the funds later? I'm just a little confused, you know, not putting into the budget. Are we handicapping ourselves or?
You can change the budget every single meeting if you want. We would strongly suggest if you not. But you can make supplements to the budget via resolution anytime during the year.
Right.
So I don't think it hamstrings us at all in any way. I do think it's important that we have a conversation about those kinds of things because I think those are interesting. Those are, those are discussions that need to be had, right? Like, do we, would we rather be the presenting sponsor of a, of a major event and just contribute, you know, under an agreement, like, hey, the town's giving this money to this event, to see these things happen and let somebody else handle it? Or do we want to be the ones in control and, and, you know, bring in the partners and try to collaborate and, and, you know, wrangle the cats, so to speak? I think either of those things can be a great scenario. I don't know that we've really defined that. And so I think it's with the chamber, for instance, the chamber is Chambers' event, right? It's not our event. Birthed Day is not the town's event. But we support it very heavily financially, logistically. And that's true of lots of events in town that are not ours, but that we support financially. But then we have our own events, like Fourth of July, that is, that is the town's event. And we bring in partners and nonprofits and, you know, hire vendors, and we do all that stuff. So I think it's worth having that conversation and kind of defining how that looks. And that might be great in the context of a, of a bigger agenda item or study session. That'll also give us, one of the things we've talked about recently internally is we have an informal policy of what events we will sponsor. And, and we've talked about that before here at, at town board meetings, but we've never formalized that sponsorship policy. I think it'd be good to have that conversation at that same meeting. You know, generally speaking, our policy is events that are free and open to the public and that take place on town property or town right-of-way. That's an easy, and that, that are not, you know, that are not proselytizing, you know, they're not religious events where they're proselytizing, those kinds of things, right? So we get requests for sponsorships all the time for events in town. Some are not free and open to the public, some don't take place on town property or in town right-of-way. And so, you know, defining what that looks like would be a good part of that conversation too, if the board would be up for that.
Yeah, I think that would help the community know what they could ask and expect from the town.
And it would give us clarity on what we need to budget for.
I agree with trustee Ayers and trustee Albrecht, and we don't have that many events where the whole community comes together. And I got to tell you, that was really special. So my full support behind that as well.
How does everyone feel about the budget here? Can we go down the row here? Does it take forever, or we just vote one of the two?
Chris and Cindy have done a great job on keeping it simple.
Wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
The numbers keep going, and we had a lot on our plate here this last fall, so for you guys to pull this off on time and quality.
It's really Cindy's work, so credit goes to her and her team in the finance department.
The detail, the changes you made, it's, it's really a nice budget.
I think we'd like to move on. Chris, go ahead, please.
Again, I just wanted to thank you, Cindy, Chris, staff, for your work on this, pulling this together. I know it's kind of a beast. This budget is a value statement, a legal commitment. I understand, you know, the nuance of deploying that money. I certainly believe that a budget should reflect commitment to the following: saving farms, open space, and natural areas, continuing work to preserve the Little Thompson Corridor, building trails, infrastructure, and investing downtown, maintaining the town's financial security and stability, and then keeping the cost of living low for our community and our staff. I guess I don't believe that the current proposed budget incurs twenty-eight million in debt for Richardson, reflects the values and priorities of the people of the community. On November fourth, Administrator Kirk stated that he didn't think we should plan for other amenities. We give more money, great, we can accelerate projects. Now, we're going to be stuck with three or four things that we built. I think I agree with that assessment and think that's the reality we're looking at under this budget. So I can't support jeopardizing these values for the next quarter century, priority thirteen baseball fields, and a rush regional resort pool. I won't support the budget with Richardson included. I would certainly be open to removing or pausing additional capital projects to reassess our whole capital project process altogether if needed, to make sure that we get this right. That's all I've got.
If anyone wants to respond, otherwise.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, a resolution summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for the Town of Birthed, Colorado for the calendar year, beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty-six and ending on the last day of December twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Wayne, seconded by trustee Hardy, or two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-five. Quick, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
No.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Mayor Karstback?
Yes.
Want me to go to the next one? I move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, a resolution appropriating sums of money to various funds and the amounts and for the purposes as set forth below for the Town of Birthed, Colorado, for the twenty twenty-six budget year.
Go second.
Trustee Wayne had moved, trustee Hardy seconded. Quick, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
No.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Karstback?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-six dash twenty-six, a resolution of the Town of Birthed adopting a fee schedule for all town fees as provided in the Birthed Municipal Code.
Second.
If a motion by trustee Wayne, seconded by trustee Hardy, quick, may we roll call vote, please?
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Karstback?
Yes.
Move to adopt Ordinance thirteen fifty-one, an ordinance of the Town Board of the Town of Birthed levying the taxes for year twenty twenty-six to defray the costs of the municipal government of Birthed, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-six, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Finally, a motion by trustee Wayne, seconded by trustee Hardy. Quick, can we have another roll call vote, please?
Certainly. And for clarification, that is Ordinance thirteen seventy-four. There is an error
Oh, thank you.
in the sheet, so I do apologize. Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Wing?
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Karstback?
Yes.
All right, heavy lift. All those have been approved. Thank you, staff. Finally, we can do reports, and then we'll go into executive session from there. So let's start off with trustee Hardy.
Thank everybody. This is our last meeting for the year, right?
Should be our last meeting for the year.
All right, so I brought everybody a little bit of sweet for the year. We're fresh drive, honey, just two jars, they're two blocks away. So I want to thank you all for having a sweet year. There's a little pun in there. I also want to reiterate the Birthed Main Street Open House tomorrow night. You should have all received egg bites for that tomorrow at five thirty. So would love to see you all there for that. And I thought I had something else, so I don't write things down. But I think that's it. Just wanted to make sure Birthed Main Street, you guys all come to that and check that out, and thank you for a great year. See you all next year.
Thank you.
Hey, trustee Ayers?
Yeah, so port committee met last week. There were two major agenda items. The first one was a great presentation about the new farm park concept design. It's moving ahead. Some of the major comments that came from the committee was that as the process moves forward, they urged that a focus was given to passive use for the park that would be part of the project as opposed to the active use, like playgrounds or ballfields or just physical permanent amenities. They wanted it to be more of interpretive, music-based, passive decorations, that sort of thing, more of like an open space. And everything that was presented to the port committee, the port committee really liked. The second thing that was up for discussion was the possibility for an open space workshop, which would be kind of an open meeting between some different entities around town, some landholders, some stakeholders, et cetera, at the February port meeting, which would be February fourth. That did move forward. The concerns about that workshop meeting specifically were based on the proposed budget at the time, not necessarily having as much money in the funds for open space. And so there was some discussion about whether or not an open space workshop was the best kind of workshop to have at that meeting. Ultimately, they agreed that it should move forward as an open space workshop. However, they wanted, generally, the consensus was that more community-focused workshops and open workshops be done for especially large capital projects, but for more of the projects sooner and more often during the process to get sort of active, in-person, active, in-person community feedback as opposed to online comments or emails or surveys. And that was generally agreed upon by the committee, so I don't know how we could work that into the system, but that was just their, their suggestion. Last thing was staff update, that the arboretum plans were at that time at ninety-six percent, give or take, completion. And it would soon, probably next month, maybe come in front of port for their comments, and then it would be brought before the port afterwards. Did you guys have any questions or?
No, thank you.
Um, just a lot of gratitude for the work that was done this year by staff and this board and knowing all of those strategic, you know, planning sessions we had and, and high-level goals and objectives. I think we're knocking a lot of them out of the park, and so I'm really grateful for each of you. All of the land that was conserved and preserved is astounding and record-breaking for Birthed. And those things aren't getting airwaves, which they should at some point, very soon. But I want you all to know that I see the hard work and dedication that each of you do, and I'm grateful. The very merry birthed was incredible, and I'm so, so blessed by all the partners in this community who love this town and who invested in that event, and I'm excited to see that grow and expand and multiply. The Youth Advisory Commission had their first float. If it wasn't great, that's totally my fault because I volunteer, and I have no idea how to do a float. But we figured out how to put lights on a Jeep, so that was good. Thanks, Tim, for the suggestion. But they had their first float, and we had our Youth Advisory Commission meeting, and they're still planning their DC trip. There was an email from the National Legal Cities, I think in our, like, spam folder or other folder. If you guys are interested in attending the conference, I found all that information there as well. And then, you know, they're just excited about what that's going to bring for them. And, and we did a, a team bonding exercise where they had to do an escape room and get out of, you know, Pharaoh's Tomb all as one team. So they did that this last week, and that was really cool to see them come out of their shells and engage with each other because otherwise I think they get a little intimidated being on the committee. So that was nice. I did get feedback from a couple of the kiddos about their devastation over the Sunoco project. And honestly, I was, I was surprised, but one of them had said she had been talking to staff and the H and S team since she was in middle school, she's now in high school, about the projects, not Sunoco, but the Life Center project. And they've been giving feedback into the youth center for many years. And so she is just disappointed that in their time, they're not going to see it completed. And so there is some, there's a lot of pain there for them. So it definitely helps to remind me that, that some type of youth project needs to stay on the forefront of our minds following that. So, and I know staff, I think staff had mentioned that there's been conversations with the school district and county. And so just want to encourage that to continue and get these kiddos, the youth center that they need. And when you talk to them, you can understand why, and you understand there really isn't any room for them to go to hang out if they can't go to the Red Center. They need that place, that that's that middle ground, that landing place. And so just want to keep that top of mind. And that's it.
Yeah, again, congrats for the very merry birthed. You two, I saw you guys, these vehicles in there, but it was great.
I had my lights on.
Well, I got to give you credit. I mean, all these different things, you, you, I think you humble yourself in the way you get involved in everything. You know, the dunk tank and everything else. So I think you set a great example. I really do, sincerely. I think that means a lot to people. Want to thanks for the budget work. I thought, I thought it was excellent. Having worked on budgets for decades, I thought you did a nice job. Tim, thanks. What a nice gesture on the honey. We all need a little sweetening, at least I speak for myself. I, I thought, I thought we had a great year. You know, it was a challenging year, but it was a great year. I want to thank the entire board and the staff, and I want to thank all of you for your professionalism. You know, we, we get into some differences of opinions, but I got to say, at the end of the day, people are very professional, and, and that goes a long way. And then speaking from experience, the easiest thing, the easiest path to take is to do nothing. There's no risk. You don't stick your neck out. You aren't going to get criticized. Doing nothing is the easiest thing. What I'll tell all of you is thank you for your courage, for taking on difficult decisions, difficult projects, making difficult decisions, and sticking your neck out there to be criticized for people, but doing at the end of the day what's right for the town. So you all should feel very, very good about what you do. And I guess the last thing is Merry Christmas to all of you.
Wanted to thank staff again for very merry birthed. Phenomenal job. Aside from that, we've got tree committee next Monday. I'm sure they're all excited to hear about the tree replacement program. And special shout-out to the forestry department for putting all the work in and putting up the lights.
They're constantly battling with the squirrels and fickle, I know how difficult it is to get lights in trees like that, so special shout out to them, it's definitely underappreciated without you, so that's all I get. Merry Christmas.
Had a sad update on that note, just tonight, that one of the lights got there. They already made their mark. NPO meeting was relatively brief, we supported a, so, well, the front is in a non-attainment area by the EPA, and meaning that our greenhouse gases are above acceptable standards, been an argument for a very, very long time that we can't control a lot of this background ozone, coming from wildfires or from other countries. I think it's been well documented on that this is the case, but nonetheless, we've had no luck, Arizona, a lot of the Mountain West is in the same boat. EPA is under new leadership now, and Maricopa County has kind of challenged this ruling by EPA, and EPA looks sympathetic to changes to get us out of non-attainment, get them out of non-attainment, so the NPO approved a resolution of support for Maricopa County, with the idea being that if Maricopa County gets out, then we'll probably be there. Being non-attainment isn't a huge deal, we split your funding, roadway funding, but it would be nice to get out of non-attainment, still make all the progress we had as far as transit, like a pet stuff for the region. Board did, council did approve that minus Fort Collins and Lammert County, though they stated that they agreed with the science getting out of it, they were just worried that if we were somehow out of non-attainment, then we'd stop doing all the transit work and stuff. That, and then finally, a presentation by the state demographics office, really interesting, Lammert County and Weld, of course, are booming, Weld is just going to skyrocket here, Lammert County is kind of leveling off, but Weld is just going to be one or two in the state as far as growth. Having them down there is really interesting, you were saying that for Lammert side, there'll be increased population, will actually be statewide, so we've relied a lot on net migrations in, we have an aging workforce, so we're kind of relying on students to come in and then become first-time professionals here in the state. As people age more and more and we get less migrations in, obviously our overall age will be older, state demographics is saying that with that age, you'll be more retirees, so less, be prepared for having less increases in the budget, will be as much income tax and more needs as far as senior social services for transportation. I thought those are kind of interesting to look forward on or to look out on, of course, a lot of things can change in the upcoming decades, but just the boom in Weld and kind of leveling off in Lammert, we're just stuck between those two counties. Yeah, other than that, I agree with everyone here, it's just been fantastic work with all you guys, and yeah, we butt heads sometimes, but it's always come from, it being genuine and respectful, and I'll talk behind people's backs, but just calling directly, hearing it from firsthand, and it's a real honor to work for you guys and work with you, and the same with staff, and we all did it the same tonight, the audience too, but what a great event Saturday. It always be gone on as a tradition, I think this is really, Saturday was the beginning, the official beginning, making this thing huge, I love walking down these streets. Thank you very much. That is all I have, so can whoever's staff?
Thank you, Mayor Karstback and trustees, so just, I know we're all piggybacking on here, but I think it's important to recognize all the folks that did some really cool stuff this year, and, you know, one of the big things that we did this year was that big eighty-foot-tall spruce tree in the park, it's fun to know that that is, we believe strongly, that is the tallest living decorated Christmas tree in the state of Colorado, and we did apologize to Westminster on Facebook for stealing their crown, but. Yeah, I bet they are. That tree was decorated, the lights were hung by We Hang Christmas Lights, the local company, we contracted with them to do that work and appreciate what they did, and Alterain did the trees down Main Street, I think some people noticed that Santa was turning those on with magic as he was coming down the street, but if you didn't, that was, that was pretty, if you knew it was happening, it was really fun to see, and if you didn't know that's what was happening, you were also kind of like, wait, the lights are turning on as the parade comes, so that was, that was a really cool new addition to our lighting scheme downtown, that definitely looks great, so a big thanks to Alterain Landscaping, We Hang Christmas Lights, all the groups that participated, even the ones that we paid to do the work, they did a fantastic job. The, just as a brief update on the town attorney situation, Attorney Smith is joining us virtually tonight, so she was here if you needed her, but as you know, she's moving towards retirement, and we're so grateful for her service that she's rendered to the town, I mean, she's just been a fantastic asset to us. We are searching for a new town attorney, and we need you to, or we'd like to ask that you appoint one or two members of your board to participate in an interview committee as we start to gather those proposals. We have extended the deadline for those proposals until January eighth, I've talked to Attorney Smith, she'll continue to support us until we're able to bring somebody on, but with the holidays and everything else, we think we're going to need a little bit of extra time, so we're hoping that we'll get lots of good proposals to consider, we're looking obviously for firms that have specific municipal general counsel experience, and Attorney Smith has provided a lot of good recommendations, she's reaching out, hoping to kind of beat the, you know, beat the bushes, try and find us a good, maybe suitable replacement to fill her shoes, but anyway, we'd like to ask that you appoint one or two members of the board to serve on the interview committee, and we'd like to get that going as quick as we can, and so we don't want to wait until your next meeting in January, so if there are one or two of the trustees that are interested in serving. Are the other trustees, that's okay with everybody?
I'd be interested in. I don't know how many people you can have in there.
We can't have more than two, or it becomes a town board meeting, and we don't want to have a public interview, I don't think, and we would have to notice it as a public meeting that way.
Yeah, we did that with you, but. Well, how do you guys want to do this?
That's okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I guess I think about the three-person meeting rule, so you guys got it.
So trustee Wing and mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
Going to try to cheaper January, you think?
Yeah, hopefully we'll have those, you know, hopefully we'll have proposals to review the week after the eighth, so we'll narrow those down and try to set interviews just within a couple of weeks after that, and hopefully get a contract prepared and have an attorney on staff, maybe at the first meeting, or under contract at the first meeting in February at the latest. And we want to be respectful of the fact that Attorney Smith would like to retire, and we're really grateful that she's going to continue to support us and get us through that transition period. Twenty twenty six, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, don't give her heartburn like that.
She's done a great job.
She has, so thank you for being willing to support that effort. The open space workshop that trustee Ayers mentioned, summit workshop, meeting, you know, we think it makes sense to have the port committee help to support that effort, but we do need some other partners to participate in that, like our partners at Colorado Openlands and others, and because of some scheduling challenges, we may move that back to March, so we'll work with the port committee on timing, but we really, I think it's important that we have those partners there, because we really want to educate the public, the port committee, we want to extend invitations to landowners, and just talk about what has the town done, what can the town do, what are options out there that don't involve the town at all, and, you know, conservation easements don't necessarily have to include the town, but, you know, what, what's out there, what does our open space plan say, and what does it look like, just kind of covering open space really broadly and trying to get as many people in to educate and participate as possible, so. Yeah, it is, and that was a goal you guys set for us, and we're a little behind the eight ball on that, but we're, hopefully we can have that rolling in March and help keep that momentum going. Our community development team had a booth at the craft fair on Saturday morning as part of the Very Merry Bertha, you know, it was like a day-long event, there was all kinds of stuff happening all day, but our craft fair, the rec center, one, was a great event organized by our rec team, but two, the community development team got a lot of great feedback on things like public art and historic preservation, and there were people bringing people to the booth, like, hey, this is the one I needed, I told you you needed to come and give them your feedback, so we've had a lot of those kind of public outreach opportunities over the last year at various events, and this was another successful one, so as we bring some of those projects forward to you in the coming months, you'll hear about that feedback as well. The teen center effort is underway, so I really appreciate trustee Albrecht bringing that up, I know that's, that's been near and dear to a lot of folks' hearts for many years, we had obviously hoped to do that as part of the Sunoco project, and so that's kind of what spurred these new meetings, we agreed, our kind of initial working group includes the county and H and S and the town, myself, and the school district and some others, that we want to keep that effort moving, so in January, the county health department has taken on the lead role in trying to make this happen here in Bertha, and so we're really grateful for the county health department's partnership. And they've organized a meeting for us in January up in Fort Collins to tour the teen center in Fort Collins, TAC two-one-two is what it's called, Teen Activity Center two-one-two, and we'll also kind of continue that discussion about who are the right partners, how could this get done here in town, whether it's the Sunoco building or somewhere else, how can we fund it all, both the construction and operation, so we've got representatives from the rec team, the library, school, county, some nonprofit partners and others, so just wanted you to know that that is still continuing forward, and hopefully as that gets refined, we'll have an opportunity to come and kind of share all the work that the county is now taking the lead on, and we're grateful for, again, their partnership.
And to clarify, are we able to tour that facility?
Yeah, I'm sure they would love to show it, if there are trustees that would like to participate in that, we can send that information out, again, once we get three and we start talking about town business, it becomes a public meeting, and so that gets wonky for a lot of reasons, but I'm happy to send out that information to you guys, and if you're interested, if we can accommodate two of you during that tour, that would be awesome. No, state law is three, three or more, correct?
I'd actually really love to be able to do the tour and invite the youth advisory chair to attend as well.
That's a great idea.
Have that youth perspective.
And the youth advisory committee here in town is one of the stakeholders that we said needed to be involved in that process, so when and how, you know, I think, I think the more the merrier, especially early, to try and get as many people participating as possible, but it also can get unwieldy, but I agree with you, so I'll connect with you about that, the youth advisory, and I'll copy the board, and if there's others that wanted to participate, we can either schedule a separate tour, if we can't get everybody in, or if there's just two that want to go, I'm sure that'll be fine, I don't want to speak on behalf of the county, but I'm sure that she'll be fine with that. The, as you know, we've been going back and forth on this kind of raft bats, you know, coordination, merger, what does that look like, we did get some additional information that we requested from them, we got that back just last week, so that will be coming back to you in January as well, so just wanted you to know that that work is still going on, at some point there will be a decision about kind of what is the future of transportation look like in Bertha, and how does that, how does that get executed, but that's still plugging along. Oh, and then you received an email from a resident who lives in Heron Point, who had expressed some concerns about the construction in Heron Lakes and kind of the long-term construction project and the impacts associated with that to neighboring properties. We do have a construction standards ordinance, the board approved just a few years ago, to kind of tighten control on how construction sites are operated, when they can operate, the noise they can, they can, you know, that can emanate from the property, dust control, trash, you know, all that stuff is contained within that ordinance. I've asked our neighborhood services team to monitor that site a little more closely, this is a bad time to do that, because when there's snow on the ground, there's not quite as much activity, although they are still moving dirt, but we wanted to gather some information specifically about like, is the current ordinance being violated? If it is, maybe that's the problem, we can address it without changing code, if the ordinance isn't being violated, but we still feel like the impacts are too great, then maybe that's a different conversation, so I did say I would bring it up during reports tonight, if you guys feel differently, please let me know, but our thought is, we'll gather as much data about what is the problem out there currently, that's the first complaint we've got about it. It could be, right, and it could be that, hey, maybe this is not illegal, it's within our code, but maybe we think it's still, maybe we still want to, you know, dust that off and consider changes to make it even harder, maybe that's not the right term, to try and reduce the impacts of construction on neighboring properties. So my suggestion is, we continue forward monitoring the project and all the other projects in town too, but obviously this one we received a specific complaint about, so monitoring that work, and then we'll come back to you, you know, early next year and just let you know what we found, and if we feel like there's a need to take on a code change or not, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I live in that neighborhood, and my cul-de-sac has been under construction, it is right now, for over the last three years, and, you know, I think to some degree you go, you expect that, right, I mean, you're going to have mud on the street because the trucks are going on the property before it's done, so there's going to be noise, there's going to be banging of hammers, and you don't want it at four or five in the morning, but I think I saw something about seven AM or whatever, so it's never fun, but there is light at the end of the tunnel.
That's true, and, you know, impacts, noise impacts, all those kinds of things, there are some things I think we can all objectively say are not good, right, it's that kind of reasonableness test, would a reasonable person say this is too much? And then there are some things that are, that other people are more sensitive to, I'm not saying that's the case here, but that's just true of everything, right, I mean, it's traffic, it's noise, it's light, some people don't care if there's a light shining in their bedroom window all night, some people can't sleep, it drives them nuts, and they lose their mind, right, and legitimately so, I'm one of those people.
It's that, you know, people are stealing appliances and going in and stealing different things, so, yeah, it comes with, new construction comes with certain problems.
Yep, but we'll, you know, like I said, we'll gather additional information, we'll bring that to you if we feel like there are changes that need to be made, and even if we don't think there are changes to be made, we'll at least give you that report, so you kind of know what that looks like, and you can decide if you feel like there are changes that need to be made. And that's it on my list.
We had the local licensing authority.
Thank you.
Yes, that is correct, with the local licensing authority, we will need to do some advertisement on that, and so as far as an interview date, so that we can look at our calendars, we would be looking at interviews on the evening of Monday, January the twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-six, and so we'll need two board members that could serve on that committee, that would be similar to other volunteer committees, and I'm not sure that we've discussed too much about the local licensing authority, so the function of that is to consider liquor and marijuana applications essentially, and so any hearings that go before that authority would be regarding any liquor license applications or marijuana applications. Currently, the liquor licensing, the local licensing authority meets once per month on the same day as municipal court, the local licensing authority is made up of the municipal judge, one volunteer member from the community, as well as the town clerk, and so this would be for one vacancy for that volunteer community member.
The twenty-sixth, right?
Yes.
I'll jump in on that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, that's close to those committees, I did, that talent night walker lady did reach out about the contributions to her wildlife, sorry, I said I'd bring it up just because, I don't know what else to say, I don't know what you guys think. Personally, I have trouble just donating to that group, I feel like we do have the Humane Society, I rescued that the other time, and the Humane Society was going to take it, so they do take wildlife, they just told me they would put it down, so, and I went to another place that takes them, but I don't know, I just, I'm fine not supporting this group, I just wanted to see what you guys thought.
Seems like our needs are covered, that's why I asked, or at least a vast majority, and if there is an exception, sounds like we do have a plan B.
I think the wildlife, yeah, that's just, that's the question, is are they all covered? I don't know.
Well, I think it might be a little different in a sense that with the Humane Society, it is a contract between the Humane Society and three municipalities to provide a minimum number of service hours per week, and this perhaps is sounding a bit more like a donation for services that maybe is less defined, with no co-humane, it's very defined, it's very clear what services they do provide, so I think it may be different in that sense. So I I think it may be different in that sense.
Wasn't a big number.
It's five grand, and I don't know their formulation for it, but. I wonder if they already reached out to Fort Collins and the county, I don't know.
And I do think, I appreciate Clerk Samora's distinction, you know, the support that we provide um to all the groups that we work with. Are done under contract. Like, we're we're asking them to provide specific services, uh so we don't donate to nonprofits. We, you know, we enter into agreements with nonprofits for services um for other government entities or quasi-government entities, right? But like, we don't. The town doesn't typically donate. So we might sponsor an event. We don't consider that a donation, it's a marketing expense for the town. Um, we're, you know. We're supporting events that matter, we're promoting the town generally, uh but we're not donating. So I thi- I do think that's an important distinction.
Alright, uh, anything else? Okay, um, would anyone like to move us into executive session?
Oh, here we go, I got it. I'm moved to go into executives uh into executive session pursuant to CRS section twenty four dash six dash four oh two F. And not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in an open session, any member of this body or elected official. The appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official or personal policies that do not require the discussal. Discussion of matters personal to particular employees and the following details are provided, town administrator annual evaluation.
Mayor Pro Tim Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Albrecht?
Yes.
Trustee Wing?
Yeah.
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Karzpek?
Yes, alright. Let's take a five minute break and then I'll meet the other room.
You need to close the meeting or not?
No.